Almighty and everlasting God who presides over all things in heaven and earth, come and preside over these deliberations so that those that make the decisions may be guided by your wisdom.
Bill?
Oh, I'm sorry. After all these years, you think I know. Almighty and everlasting God who presides over all things in heaven and earth, come and preside over these deliberations so that those that make the decisions may be guided by your wisdom.
Okay.
It was paid.
Okay, um, council has one item on their agenda. It's a resolution approving the transfer of a restaurant liquor license into the city at 165 Wilkes-Barre Boulevard from Foster Township. Council just had a public hearing on the matter, 5 o'clock, so any questions on that one? Okay.
Good evening. Several RCAP applications were asking for your approval now. Before I read these, I just want to mention that this is just a pass-through for the city. There is a 100% match on these RCAP applications also. So first of all, I'd like to start out with the resolution authorizing the proper city officials to purchase rock salt necessary for 2023-2024 winter season pursuant to the terms of a previously bid contract through Co-Stars. We're looking at approximately 2,400 tons that we're going to be purchasing, and as I said, it's through the Co-Stars. Reappointing Tom Harfman to the city Wilkes-Barre Board of Health. Also authorizing the proper city official and to enter into a cooperative agreement with the Wright Center for Community Health for the project that enables the nonprofit community health center to expand opportunities for regional residents. And this is in the amount of $2 million authorized. Now, how would you like to do this? Would you like to ask questions of the people that are here representing them now, or wait until I'm finished?
If need be, if council has any questions on any, maybe we'll...
Because I believe the Wright Center representatives are here tonight.
Council have any questions for gentlemen? Any council questions? No, proceed, Mayor.
Got off easy.
I don't get off that easy.
Authorizing proper city officials into a cooperative agreement with the Domestic Violence Service Center for the project that will provide decent housing and suitable living environment through an improved emergency shelter facility to benefit the community, and that's the amount of $1,100,000. Any questions for the domestic?
Are they here?
Any questions?
Any questions, council? Nothing, proceed, Mayor.
Okay. Authorizing proper city officials to enter into a cooperation agreement by Mountain Valley Art League for the project that will complete a comprehensive renovation project for the Circle Center for the Arts building in the amount of $750,000.
He's there.
Council, any questions on that? Good, Mayor.
Authorizing the submission of an application for funding for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for the redevelopment assistance capital program grant amount of $2 million, $2,500,000 for the purpose of constructing the Dorothy Dixon Dart Center ADA Accessible Upgrades Project. Any questions for Will?
I don't have any questions, but can we just vote on that one separately?
Okay.
Just that one? Yeah, just that one.
Okay, anyone else, anything else?
We could take the rest as a consent.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I have to abstain, I want Art League one separately, too.
Okay, well, you'll just be abstaining if need be.
I know, but if we do it in a...
Yeah.
Do it separately. Because if we do it as consent, he doesn't stand and all that.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Kathy, did you want to mention that we're pulling into King's College?
You can.
Pardon me?
You can do it if you'd like.
Okay, uh, the King's College Student Success Center application has been pulled for tonight. And then last is authorizing the proper city officials to file a business plan and application with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for redevelopment assistance capital grant program amount of $1 billion for assistance with the MRI recycling facility expansion project.
Mayor, where's that located? That was my question, too.
Anyone here?
Is that the one? Is that the one in Hanover, Mayor?
This is the Solomon, um, the Solomon Recycling Program. It's, uh, for the recycling that we do right now, you know, with the dual-stream type of project. So they'll be the ones that will be the recipient, but as I said, there isn't a match, 100%.
Match, so they'll be doing the project for $2 million.
That's for Solomon Industries, yeah.
Mike, just one quick question on the Wright Center. What are your hours of operation?
Currently just moving through Friday at 8 to 6.
That's what this, you're going to continue that?
Yes, we will probably be looking at expanding to a seven-day a week at some point.
Same timeframe, just roughly?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And if I can follow up on that, the $2 million request, is that for something brick and mortar, or is that the program?
Yeah, so we purchased the building at 169 Old Pennsylvania, and we had to gut it, so we are doing it in stages. We have a medical exam room so that we can move from Kingston over to this facility. And then the next stage is will be psychiatric behavior health and dental.
Okay, great. One more question for you, sorry. When, if everything goes through, when you plan on opening?
Well, we are opening now with medical. We open January 9th.
Okay, that's right, yeah.
$9,000 for...
Okay, so you're just... Okay.
We're hoping to be open in January, hopefully, we open in the fall, and the dental will be January 24th.
All right, thank you.
Can we, uh, can we get your name and, uh, for the record?
I'm Ronald Dan Mills, I'm the chief financial officer at the Wright Center.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anything more, council?
Yeah, I just want to make, I'm going to make comment, I'm going to commend the work that the Domestic Violence Shelter does. My mother was on the board back in the '70s, and when I was a little kid, I remember the pager system and going to the shelter and not telling anyone where it is and all that kind of stuff. You guys are, the work you do is so needed, and I'm glad you're doing housing here, too. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else for the, for the meeting? Council presentations, Councilman Brooks, anything today?
Yes, this is a prop I bought. So, my drugs. I just want, I want to make a comment about a scenario I went through this week. So on the radio, there was a commercial for "You Know Someone Who Has A Problem", and they meant fentanyl, opioids, any kind of addiction. And it said that "Go to your pharmacy and get Narcon." An Exelon, Nellaxelon is the, I guess the name brand. Anyway, so I thought, well, let me go test this system out. So I go to CVS, go to the pharmacist, say, "You want to get Narcon?" I heard an ad on the radio. He says, "We have insurance?" I'm like, "Ooh, I thought it was over the counter." Says, "Oh, you still need insurance, and you got to wait 15 minutes." So I thought, "Okay," waited 15 minutes, got Narcon for free, my insurance paid for it. I said to the guy, "If I had to pay for it, how much was it?" He said, "$72. I said, "Wow, geez, that's kind of prohibitive for people to have it in their car." So I said, "No offense to you, sir, but if somebody was overdosing at any of your pharmacy right now, they just died. So we need to, the system needs to be..." You know, and I know that's the system with the federal government, and CVS needs to be cleaned up a little bit. But why I'm presenting this here today is what I thought about, and I want to commend this to the administration, is that $72 is a little too much for people to handle. And perhaps the health department could seek out a grant that we could afford it for our residents, or at least people, low-income people. And then obviously CBS and the federal government, wherever, they'll have to work out their system about it, because obviously you can't just run into a CBS and get this and go help somebody. Obviously, I would call 911 in that situation, because I know our cops have them, and the fire department. But so that's something that I wanted to commend to the administration to look into about this. So I'm glad it's happening, I'm glad there's a way that each and every one of us can be on the front lines of fighting this epidemic that we have. This is a good thing the government does, and perhaps our health department could make it even better. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good work, Councilman. Councilman Marconi, anything today?
I certainly agree with Tony, a great presentation there. I don't have anything at this point, I'm back to my 4,000 emails to Charlie, and he has been responding very well. So I appreciate that, Charlie, for everything you do. Much appreciated, that's all I have, sir.
Councilwoman McBride, anything today?
Um, yeah, just South Sherman Street. I know the utility company was working on it, I know it's quickly become the bane of your existence, but the pave cuts have now kind of turned into full-blown potholes, they're really, really bad there. South Sherman between North Hampton and East South Street. So if you could just get, you know, you know, get in contact with the utility company just to see the status of that, I would appreciate it.
We'll do it tomorrow.
Thank you, I appreciate it. That's all I have.
Councilman Barrett, anything today?
Something very similar to Beth's, and we talked about this, George Avenue, there's three cuts. They're squared off nicely, they're ready to be restored, but in the meantime, they're deteriorating so badly that something needs to be done before they actually come into the restoration. They had put some sort of patching material in there, and it's all blown out all over the street. I believe there are PA water cuts, if I'm not mistaken, John, I think you've seen them, you probably go by them all the time.
Yeah.
But they do need some attention now, not waiting until the spring when they can pave and make a permanent restoration on them there. And it's a very busy area, and they're hard to miss. And 1022 Scott Street, that famous property that burned two years ago, I know that we have issued citations, or at least I believe that we have issued citations, but there's still the same trash in front of it, couches in the front yard, construction debris and everything else there. I don't know what it's going to take to get them to clean it up. I understand they occasionally work on the property, but they also need to be reminded that there is trash all about the property, including junk vehicles, and we need to make sure, we need to put pressure this person to clean that up. And I'm kind of upset that it's still two years, and the property still looks the way it does. I mean, I think it's an awful long time for a fire-damaged property to be repaired, but in the meantime, the trash out there on Scott Street is really out of hand. And that's all that I do have.
Councilman Barrett, is that the one that's on George Ave and Scott, that one?
Yes.
That's been like that for what, 10 years?
Two years, it burned two years ago.
Two years?
And meantime, there's still debris outside, junk cars and that type of stuff.
I agree with you.
You know, it needs to be addressed.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, just real quick, a follow-up with Councilman Barrett, too, to the, to the administration. And you would know this, on Scott Street, I know you had brought it up about a month ago, that huge hole that they dug up on Scott Street, there's two of them there, Charlie. I don't remember what the address is.
About 1100?
Yeah, it was just paved, and you know, there was a, there was a water main break. We get it, but that's, I go over that quite a bit, and it's rough. I don't know if we can do anything now, but just if we can put it on the notes. You know, it's, everything is so nice, that road is so nice, and then, you know, you go over those two things, and it's, it's kind of rough there. Like I said, just, just put a note on that, please. Thanks.
Good. The only thing I have is I just want to thank council for your nice get-well card and the gift that goes along with it. And in my absence, I was missing the last two meetings, but I'm back, and I'm back for good, hopefully. But I just want to express my thank you. And the Councilman Barrett that filled in as my replacement, thank you very much, Bill. Anything else for the end of the work session? Any comments? We will proceed to our council meeting in a few minutes.
Almighty and everlasting God who presides over all things in heaven and earth, come and preside over these deliberations so that those that make the decisions may be guided by your wisdom.
Yeah, just ask if anybody...
Before we get started, anybody want to fill out a speaker registration form? Last opportunity. Okay, Kathy, proceed.
Okay.
Roll call.
Start with roll call, Mr. Brooks.
Here.
Mr. Marconi.
Here.
Mrs. McBride.
President.
Mr. Barrett.
Here.
Mr. Belishko.
Here.
Also in attendance is Mayor George Brown, Administrator Charles McCormick, Assistant City Attorney Maureen Collins, Assistant City Clerk Tracy Smith, and Administrative Assistant Lisa Sanfilippo. Good evening, welcome to tonight's regular session of council. Please turn off all cell phones. Following our examples of some important council rules, they are not intended to be a complete list. Please adhere as closely as possible to the five-minute speaker presentation time limit. No persons are allowed to address the council from beyond the rail except the speaker at the dais who has the floor. The chairperson shall preserve order and decorum and prevent attacks on personalities. The chairperson shall determine all points of order. No person except city officers or their representatives shall be permitted within the rail during any meeting without the express permission of the council. Council kindly asks that the public please vacate the building within 10 minutes after the meeting adjourned. And finally, when members of the administration are speaking, please stand up and speak into a microphone.
Would anybody like to speak on pending legislation? Pending, Sam?
Would anybody like to speak on pending legislation?
Pending, Sam?
Yeah, Sam Troy. Can I comment on the, I wasn't here for the hearing for the liquor license transfer. Could I still comment on that, or no?
Sure.
Well, I would urge, as I usually do in these instances or these situations, since this is coming from an outside location, I would recommend that council reject this transfer. I don't know what went on during the hearing. I don't know what reasons were given, pro and con, probably not too many con, if any. But I, as you know, stand for, I think the abuse of alcohol is getting out of hand, and this area is infamous for that. I think most of you know where, this county itself is somewhere like in the top 10 of the 67 counties in Pennsylvania for alcohol abuse. It may seem like a small thing, just a liquor license transfer. But it seems to me that every time there's a request granted for exception to the alcohol ordinance on Public Square, or the parks, or something like this, it's unanimous vote, and nobody, rarely is there any of you dissent on this. And I don't, I mean, if I'm coming from a, you know, if you think that this problem is not a problem, or I'm exaggerating it, then let me know. I, you know, I guess to some extent I sound like a broken record in this, but I'm a teetotaler myself. I don't drink, that's not the reason. I mean, I don't deny anybody else the right to drink, if it's done responsibly. But practically every day in the papers you can read about someone, some family having some sort of turmoil or some domestic violence, and a lot of times alcohol is the root of the cause. So why propagate it? Why spread it around? If you have the chance to stymie it, to preclude it from a certain venue, then I think you should do it. I, I mean, is this guy's business, this is going to suffer that much from it? I'm sure this person could make a lot of money on just food and whatever. Regarding the other part of the agenda, I would like to comment a little bit. I never heard about this grant, Mayor. And I'm, and some of these, these potential applicants, some of these applicants certainly have worthwhile causes. Domestic violence, you know, I don't have any objections to that, as long as they're putting the money to good use. And the Wright Center as well, that seems like a good thing. I understand the Wilks part of it was deleted, I believe.
King's.
King's?
King's, Sam, yes.
King's College. I would just like to comment on the Art League, I guess Tony, Tony can answer that more than anybody. I think the Art League is a good thing, but, well, I would like to know in general, maybe the mayor could fill the public in this grant program before he responds. I would say, I don't, the Art League really need this, 300, 300, $4 million? I thought they were pretty well endowed. But do the, does the mayor, do you go out and tell and reveal to people that this grant is available? Do they come to you? I'd just like to know how this goes. I mean, maybe there are people that I know who might be eligible for some of this money or businesses. I never knew about this program. I know there's a lot of state money involved, but the question is, how can we, how is the word spread around? I think the public has a right to know. And as far as the grant to Wilks goes, whatever it was, half a million or whatever, I don't think that's fair and ethical to keep bending over backwards for Wilks, or King's for that matter, even though King's aspect of it has been deleted. I haven't checked the last, the budget lately, but I believe that the pilot, the payment in lieu of taxes on the part of Wilks is very minimal, considering in proportion to the amount of property that they have. They're probably, if there was no exemption from paying property tax for Wilks, they probably owe the city millions of dollars, in which case, Mayor, you could lower our property taxes by half and maybe delete the local income, local wage tax, too. Of course, that's never going to happen, but you take that into account, and the KOCs, I would like to know, you know, Wilks doesn't, Wilks is pretty well endowed, as far as I know, and so is King's. They really need this money? Could it be distributed to somebody else who better deserves it? Do you have somebody else you could approach on this, or somebody else that might apply? I think the public deserves an answer on that, too. Because I don't think Wilks pays enough, considering the way the city goes out of its way for them, and provides police and fire, and a lot of other services. I don't see the economic benefits to myself, or most of the taxpayers. But thank you for your time and consideration.
Anyone from council? Anyone else on pending legislation? John?
John Soski, Almond Lane. Well, Tony Brooks abstained, thankfully, like, I know, you voted for their bills in the past, or at least one of them, I know. Is there anybody else up there behind the rail that has any involvement with the Art League? Because it seems that they get preferential treatment, they always have their, any kind of, anything that they apply for, approved. And I know I heard you say this twice, but I want to make, just make sure that I heard this right. So every one of these cooperation agreements, they have to match it, correct?
Correct.
Correct, okay. So they're going to come up with the $750,000? I just find that hard to believe, but if they have the money, they have the money, good for them. I mean, I'm going to repeat something Sam said, because I say it all the time, too. Like, I don't understand why we, like, Dorothy Dixon Dart Center, very nice place, good theater. I have nothing against them, but like, why don't we ever use anything like this to leverage more out of the pilot? Because we're helping them get, you know, $2.5 million when they're only given, I'm not sure if it's $100,000 or $125,000 that they give us a year for payment in lieu of taxes. Like, if we're helping them bring in that much money, if they're matching it or not, we're helping them access funds. So why do we repeatedly help them access large amounts of funds if they're not going to pay us more money in return? And then, that's it. Just, anybody else have involvement with the Art League besides Mr. Brooks? Thank you. So John, just to let you know, myself, I do not have any ties to any of these entities.
Anyone else? Council? Anyone else?
No response? Come on.
Anyone else on pending legislation? No? Okay, Kathy.
Okay, so we'll take items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and then the last item, which is the MRI recycling, along with the minutes and a consent, okay? So we'll pull the Art League, and we'll do that separate, and the Dorothy Dixon Dart. So let's start with the consent first. We'll need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Barrett.
Second.
Second by Mr. Brooks. Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Marconi?
Yes.
Mrs. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
And Mr. Belishko?
Yes.
Okay, and then we'll take the, we'll do the Art League resolution. Need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Belishko.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marconi. Mr. Brooks?
Stand.
Mr. Marconi?
Yes.
Mrs. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
Mr. Belishko?
Yes.
And then we will do the Dorothy Dart. We need a motion and a second on the Dorothy Dixon Dart.
Motion.
Mr. Brooks? We need a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Marconi. Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Marconi?
Yes.
Mrs. McBride?
Abstain.
Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
Mr. Belishko?
Yes.
This one is...
That's me, right there.
Yeah, that's you.
Maureen, is the regular meeting starting at 6?
No, it's got right after.
No, we already went through that. We already went through the voting and all.
So I can't talk to you?
Sorry, no, sorry.
It doesn't start at 6 o'clock?
No, it started immediately following the work session. Anything more, council presentations?
Oh, yeah, I forgot to, going down.
Go ahead.
I forgot to mention before how great the St. Patrick's Day parade was, and how awesome those balloons were. That was a big city parade, I love how many people were coming out, and all the children have a great time, and it was just perfect. So my hat's off to Mike Slusher, president, and his team for doing an outstanding job. Really nice. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything, Mr. Marconi?
Uh, nothing further, thank you.
Mrs. McBride?
Nothing further.
Mr. Barrett?
Thank you.
Good? I'm good, too. We'll go with public discussion. John Soski. Bob, we can't. I'm sorry.
Just hold on a second. Now, in the past, people come late, they're like, "Talk."
We have another meeting next week. Thanks. John Soski.
This is, this is where you're wrong. I'm good enough to come down here, I'm a taxpayer, and other people are allowed to talk. I came, and I want to talk.
I understand that, and you know the rules.
Bob, Bob, let me get, I got you, I got you on this.
That's why I'm suing you.
In the past, okay, I'm going to comment on...
Name for the record, please?
John Soski, Almond Lane. I'm going to comment on this situation with Bob before. You've let people speak in the past who've come in late. I've complained about it many times, where people come in, they didn't know the rules or such, or they, maybe they didn't know the meeting started on time, and you've allowed them to speak. So you shouldn't stop him from speaking, even if you don't like what he's going to say. He has that right to speak. And like, I know what the rules are, but you guys have, in the past, allowed exceptions to those rules. I've complained about it before, and you've, you've went along and let other people speak. You can find it on video, it's, it's out there in the YouTube videos. So he has the right, you guys have allowed it in the past, so I think you should continue to allow it. My question is on contractors working in the city. How much has the city spent on contractors for cutting grass and snow plowing over the last year? That's all I have.
Anyone? Thank you, John. Sam Troy.
Sam Troy here. The first point I have, I notice, is it true that all city parks are supposed to close at dusk, correct? At dusk? All city parks?
I believe it.
That includes Riverfront, or whatever you call it in Kingston, you know, the Riverfront, is that what it's called?
Kirby?
Huh?
In Kingston?
Yeah.
Kirby, Kirby Park.
Not, well, not Kirby, but across, yeah. Well, you have that road that goes past Geisinger and up around the apartment complex that, where you enter into the park, that park there, that... And I happened to pass by there the other night. I'd made a wrong turn, I went down that road, and I saw a couple of cars go up that road into the park. So I think council or somebody, or the mayor should act, I mean, God knows what they're doing down there. You don't have a lot of, I don't think, good citizens hanging out there. I think there's some people who might be doing some dubious things, God knows what. people who might be doing some dubious things, God knows what. I think, as a recommendation, Mayor, for that park really should be closed to all vehicles, but if you're going to keep it open to vehicles, I mean, I think it should just be open to pedestrians and bicyclists. But if you're going to keep it open, keep it accessible for, and of course, emergency vehicles, but it's going to be open for vehicles, then there should be some barricade in there, something to keep them from going in that, there evidently is not. So, I think somebody should look into that, access to the park, that road, to close it down. My other comments, I have a bunch of them, but I basically don't have much time, but I would like to just allude to the point that was well discussed the last meeting, which was the overtime situation. Very disturbing, to say the least, to any taxpayer. And I again thank the citizens' voice for their major article along the lines of exposing that situation. I don't think anybody, well, I know Mr. Barrett had mentioned that he was aware of the problem, and some of you others were, but what have you done to rectify it, to address it? Okay, it's part of labor negotiations that, which seem to go on in secret. The public has no access to them, and we don't know what's going on, but evidently the unions have held steadfast against any kind of resolution to at least compromising on this overtime. For one person, I don't care what his or her position is, to get a hundred thousand dollars on overtime, in addition to his or her salary, I don't care what that person does. And Mayor, you rationalize it about the last meeting, you're a great rationalizer, and that's why you're a great politician, I guess. You have an answer for everything. But I think this deserves your attention, this problem. It has to be cut back somehow. I mean, we're, most of us, a lot, I don't know what the percentage is. The average income in the city of Wilkes-Barre for a family of four is what, thirty thousand dollars? You just gave yourself a ten thousand-dollar generous raise. This guy got a hundred, and there was one-point-six-million dollars handed out in overtime. This problem seems like it's going to go on odd infinitum, forever. That's distressing to me as a taxpayer and somebody who's struggling. It should be, it's probably very distressing for others in the city as well. As I said, most people in Wilkes-Barre City are, a lot of, I don't know what the percentage is, at least thirty, forty percent are below the poverty level. Some people have, are struggling to hold on to their homes and have trouble putting food on the table, and this kind of outrageous situation is going on? This has to be contained. I don't have much time left, and I'd like to move on to my other subjects. As I said before, and I think you all will confirm this, the city's fiscal situation is not so bad. In fact, it's pretty solid. Now, I know you had to use some ARP funding to balance the budget, Mayor, and I know we're going to probably be facing, maybe you'll be facing a deficit next year, despite all the ARP money we have left, which is what, eighteen million, something like that, Charlie? Nobody seems to know the figure. So, the ARP money can be used to balance the budget, which means we have, the city has some money left over. Can we not finally address the situ, well, two things I want to see, and I don't have time to address the one, by advocating for an energy audit, so the city can reduce its carbon footprint, something you should be interested in, and at the same time, save money, God forbid, to assess why we need these large vehicles trucking around? We can have smaller ones, gas savers, why buildings, how we can conserve energy in different structures, the buildings the city owns, for instance, City Hall. And the last, but not least, is it my brainchild, the taxpayer relief fund. I would like to see some money put into a fund that all taxpayers in the city, regardless of income, unless they're in the ultra-high levels, can draw on this fund to pay a little bit of their tax burden, whether it's city, county, or, city, county, or school district tax. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Any comments from council?
Ms. Collins, would you please stick up for me? I come down, you violated my rights. They let other people do this. I want to...
Bob, Bob, could you please sit down? You could videotape, just sit down. You're disturbing the meeting.
I know you're not feeling good, but can I please talk? I was good enough to come down.
No, you can't talk.
That's the...
I have not allowed...
Look, I know you're not feeling good. I don't want to upset you.
No, I feel fine.
Okay.
Could you please sit down?
Because I'm going to be suing you, but, Ms. Collins, you have to help me do this. I left, I come down, I thought the meeting was at six. They let other people talk like this.
Bob, please sit down.
I'm not sitting down. I've got the right to videotape. You violated my rights. You're getting sued. Do you understand? Why can't I, Ms. Collins, will you please ask them to let me talk? Call ten police. All I'm trying to do is bring out, I have the proof of what Mr. Barrett said for me to get, about how you crooks use part-time service towards a full-time pension.
Yes.
Mr. Namie, do you believe it? Worked eight years full-time and has collected almost three-quarters of a million dollars in retirement. Tom Layton's been off for how many years? He's collecting almost three-hundred thousand dollars in retirement by simply working part-time. I come down here to talk, to be nice. You're discriminating against me. And, Ms. Collins, you're the city attorney, your assistant. You should be telling him, he's violating my rights. They let other people do this, but not me. Now, that's what I was bringing down here.
Bob, please sit down.
I don't want to sit down. Why should I sit down? I'm not doing nothing.
Okay.
I'm just trying to get, I'm getting my point in, so I guess I'm getting away talking. And that's all, and here's the thing, I want to give you this proof.
Can you call a recess? Call a recess.
Here's the...
We'll be in recess.
Here's, somebody here take this and copy this and give it to her, Bill. Take this and give it to everybody. Get the, get it copied. This is what you told me to get. It shows how these thieves, the part-time council people, use their part-time service towards a full-time pension, and that's why the pension system is going broke. And, Mr. Belishko, I know you're not, that's the help right now, but what did I do? I come here as an honest citizen just to talk, and you won't let me talk, but you let other people talk. And if you throw me out of here, that's only going to add more...
Tony Thomas, please.
Wait, wait, is there any response to my, Mike, was there any response by anybody